Rule call. Bonnie?
Here.
Chris?
Yes, here.
Carla Corey?
Here.
Horeen Bori? Samantha Bryan?
Here.
Bryan, drop him.
Here. Our approval or amendments to the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda is... Second.
Oh. I guess. All in favor to approve it? Aye.
Approval of minutes on July 19th, 2023 meeting.
I wasn't here for that.
Right.
Motion to approve the July 19th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Clay Township's zoning board of appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present tonight.
Great job.
At least three members voted positively for our motion to grant a variance. At least three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members have the board... Members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish.
Alright, so open up, uh, new bit... Nope, we're gonna go... Oh. Why don't we have the, uh...
Yes, owner?
This one's not updated. I'm sorry. Alright, so we've got some unfinished business that's gonna go next. Carla? You can't vote on it. No, you can't either.
Yeah.
Can't vote on this one. Alright, so you guys just kinda listen. Alright, so the owners at, um, 452 North Russell. Are they here? Russell Island? We really didn't request them to be here. Alright, so this is in particular an accessory building without permit on potential, uh, without a principal structure. We postponed that meeting to get, um, some clarification on the zoning ordinance. Gary Disis, can you come up and...
Good evening. So, yes, um, so of course, I couldn't find it at last meeting, and within 20 seconds, back in my office, I pulled it up. So, yeah, we've gotta use our imagination a little bit if we're pretty sure that they are gonna build. You know, there is a provision in 301, uh, 3.01.12, um, that kinda goes down that path, where you're allowed to have, you know, a storage building to secure tools or, or materials prior to the build. I think what we kinda came up with at last meeting was to give them a minute to actually get something started as far as building. They plan to build there, um, but we need probably to put something more in concrete. They've got a house across the street that I believe this shed was moved to, um, from that property over to across the road onto the waterfront property. And I, I think it's just a matter of, of, um, if they are gonna build, and that house that they lived in and sold is under land contract for one year, we found that out. So if we wanted to do something to allow for that shed to remain, um, until that house could be started or built with a timeframe. And I think the number was like 18 months, but, you know, if it's 12, uh, 12 months on the balloon payment to be done, and then they're gonna build, then give them, give them some space to actually be able to build it and keep that shed there. It's, it's a nice little shed, but to keep it there during the building process. But, yeah, they do need to start. I mean, we don't wanna set precedents that we're allowing for accessory structures beyond vacant property, um, but I'm pretty, pretty certain that they are gonna build there. But if we put timelines on it and they, they don't meet those timelines, then at that point, 12 also talks that at the expiration, um, you know, whatever date you decide. If something hasn't been started, then we have some kind of, uh, wait to have it removed.
Perfect. And Sam, you were, you were... Do you understand that? And you were doing the motion on that?
Yeah.
Do you still wanna continue with that motion and add this ordinance? And a timeline? I know Janice was here, she's unfortunately not here any longer, so she was also helping you, or... So that second is gone now. She's not on the board any longer, so...
Yeah.
You'd have to restate that if you're gonna continue with it.
Um... Has there been a building permit?
No, if this is the one that they just sold their house.
Okay, so there's no building permit.
Until they get paid off, they didn't really have plans on building the new structure until this house is... The land contract has been paid off. So they moved it from the house that they sold to their current vacant land.
I think you were trying to mention that they would need to get a building permit to comply to that ordinance, to that, uh, provision.
Well, you see, you know, uh, section 12 of 301, 3.01, um, it's, it's, doesn't fit this to a T.
Okay.
Uh, so it's a matter of if either we wanna allow the shed to remain, uh, or, or have it removed. You know, with the way our ordinance reads right now, uh, without a principal building, the accessory structure cannot stand, cannot stay. So with the understanding that they're building with the provisions of 12 that allow you to have, you know, a, a shed prior to, um, in order to secure tools or materials, is something that's not so far out of the box. I would just suggest that we put timeframes on it. They still need to get a permit for the shed, shed, you know, because right now, we don't allow for it to be there. So our option right now is that, my position right now is that it disappears. But with this understanding of 12, um, you know, we can critique it a little bit, uh, just for this specific case, if you so desire, uh, to allow it to stand and, and give them, you know, some wiggle room. Give them the, the year that it's gonna take to, to get paid off on that cabin that's there, um, and then, you know, giving them six months to figure out a plan to build. And if it doesn't happen within that timeframe, um, then, you know, your motion should read that that has to be removed at that time.
I think that's what we were talking about, the 18 months.
Yeah.
I mean, I was stretching to two years, but the 18 months seem to be more realistic, especially coming into the winter right now, well, fall. And it's still gonna be a year before roughly, whatever. We don't know the date that they're gonna get paid off on that land contract, so... I don't see a problem with this, as long as we put some timelines on it. So you gotta continue or not, or if there's anyone else? Chris, did you understand all that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you.
If you, if, if you're not comfortable, then no. I can't make a motion, so...
I know.
I can only get you guys talking.
I, I'm trying to think about how to say it the right way, pretty much, um, 'cause this would be an 18... We'd be allowing 18 months for them to basically get their affairs in order, and then this would be a variance to 3.01.
I would say more of an extension, right?
Yeah.
When you think, 'cause they don't have a building permit, they're not gonna go for that building permit, so, I mean, it's...
Right now, we have nothing. But, you know, if they apply within the 18 months, uh, if they apply for the building permit...
And it just kicks in.
Then I think it, it all works. If they don't, uh, within 18 months, then the shed has to be removed.
And he's asking also for a permit pulled on it currently. Like, as it sits right now, that, that has to...
If you allow it.
That's a must.
If you allow it, yeah.
Building pulled on the principal structure?
Nope, no. The shed itself. It sit there the way it is right now. And then give them 18 months to start the process of building. It's kinda what we were talking about last time.
I don't know, I'm not supposed to talk, but do you want a deadline on that?
18 months from today.
Yeah, but start building could be...
No, they, they have to have a building permit issued within 18 months of today.
I would say...
And then, then they have a year to complete it, and then, once the building permit's issued, then they, it's out of our, you know, extensions.
Correct.
But still, it should have a, you know, the township should... In that ordinance, or in that motion, should still say that, you know, a current building permit on the shed needs to be applied for. And no living in that, in my eyes. I mean, that way, we don't have to worry about someone living in a 10 by 10 shed on Russell Island.
Didn't you say it wasn't liveable?
I don't think so.
I don't think they had intentions of it in any way, shape, or form, but...
Yeah.
I can just see a lot of 10 by 10s going up on Russell Island.
Does anybody have an idea?
Which I buy a lot if we could.
Oh, yeah, she...
Bryan?
Actually, no, we already closed all public comments. Yeah, we already had all that. We didn't have... What's that?
Were you here from last, from beating on for this shed?
Yeah.
Last week, last time?
Russell Island?
Yeah.
Is it your shed?
Yes.
Then yes, you can come up and talk.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I asked if you were here, and you didn't get it.
She came in after.
She came in a little ways.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No problem. I, I mean, basically, there's nothing that you're gonna, I guess, say unless something has changed in your financial world that, you know, you can...
Well, no, other than I wasn't feeling well last meeting, I couldn't talk.
Alright, good, then you're gonna... You already said more than three words, you gotta come up to the podium. Sue, Sue can't hear you without the speaker. I'm sorry. Come on up and just...
Okay.
If something has changed... Just state your name again, just so everyone has it for their record.
Sharon Whitmire. Regarding, do I have to state the property address? 452 North Russell Drive. And, uh, the reason that we went for the appeal on the application, we tried to do the right thing as we explained in the letter, and, uh, we talked to all our neighbors, and there was no, you know, difficulty with the structure. Our intention was, you know, to eventually build a cottage on the front lot. And also, what I didn't mention last time is we had like a verbal agreement on our land contract that if they needed like six more months' extension, we would give that to them on the land contract. So if, if the board could see in good graces that we tried to do the right thing, it wasn't an intentional... We did try to do the right thing through the right channels, but, um... Hold on. That, uh, you know, 24 months would give us a lot more breathing room to be able to, because we really can't start negotiating with the builder until we close on the property. Doesn't make any sense, 'cause we can't get prices until we close and we have the cash and, you know, we can move forward. But we did give the people the option, if they needed a few extra months on the contract, that we would give that to them. 'Cause they need to go for refinancing on one of their properties to obtain it. Pardon me?
When did you sign the land contract?
Uh, that, I think the closing was the end of January on that. So if you could see it, you know, to give us 24 months rather than, you know, 18, two years, that should give us the time that we need to get things done.
That'd be 18 months. That'd be 18 months.
It'd be...
If it was started in January of this year.
Yeah, but if we're talking from today, we're just asking for 24 months from today.
Your land contract started in January.
That's why I asked when you land contracts, so you...
Right.
So you're already rolling.
You had eight months.
Right.
Seven months. Plus 18 months would be 24, you know?
Right.
Okay.
26.
That's what I asked.
Okay. And then, uh, no, nothing other than that. The only thing I was gonna refer to is the reason that we filled the application out, it will not alter essential neighborhood characteristics and depriving the owner rights by others in the same district, which I gave you examples of in our letter, and conditions and circumstances unique to the property not created by the owner. Now, uh, also, I wanted to ask you, if something goes, you know, wrong with the land contract, then we would be able to merge the two lots together? And then we're...
Something for the town.
I think that's beyond our scope.
It's just a shed, so if you merge...
I know.
If you re-own the house, you know what I mean? If the house defaults or whatever happens, just put the shed back on that piece of property, and it goes away.
Okay. That's all I need is clarification on.
Or give it to somebody that has a house, and it goes away, as long as they have a permit, you know what I mean? All we're doing is trying to allow you to have it on a vacant piece of property, and then hopefully you can do something within 18 months. If not, you're gonna have to do something with it.
Okay.
If this motion goes.
Okay.
I think that's fair. I think that's more than, more than fair than...
Yeah, because you had, you had both properties, and they were both taxable, and you... Ordinance always said you couldn't have a shed on a property that didn't have a house.
Right.
Well, the, the property does have improvements, it's got a C wall, I don't know what the taxes are, so...
It was still an empty lot.
It's still, you know, we're paying taxes on the property, so...
Based on the ordinance.
Okay.
So here's what I'm thinking.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Um... Approve a variance, not necessarily the one that's requested. To 3.01 with the following requirements, a building permit must be applied for, for the shed. Um, I think we need a timeframe for that. Put a timeframe on that, I don't know what that would be. 90 days. Good. Write that down. And then, um, a building permit must be applied for within X months from today. I don't know what the appropriate amount of months would be, but...
I think the 18 months is appropriate, and that, that's two years since the land contract was signed. Kind of, that's...
Yeah.
My math was going that way fast, too. And again, it's a shed. If, if they get the house back, perfect. You know, they can put the shed on that piece of property. With the house.
Alrighty. Well, I will make a motion to approve a variance to 3.01 dot 1, um, with the following requirements, a building permit must be applied for, for the shed within 90 days from today. A building permit must also be applied for, for the principal structure within 18 months from today, and if that principal building is not constructed prior to the expiration of the building permit, any accessory building construction constructed on the site shall be required to be removed within 30 days of the principal building permit expiration. Does that make sense?
Okay. Alright. What is it? Alright, do we have a second?
Really?
Carla, you can't second.
I can't second.
Are they able to pull a permit on the shed before the permit on the house is...
Yeah, that, we're allowing it to happen.
So you are allowing it, so you would...
We're allowing that.
You'd be okay with that?
Yep, but we're requesting or requiring a permit pulled on the shed currently. And then they have 18 months, right?
From today.
From, from today to start the building process, right? Or is it...
18 months from today to start the building process.
Finish the process. To start the building process. And if it hasn't been started in 18 months, within 30 days, the shed must be removed.
The permit, the permit for the shed, would it require everything you brought up to current standards for a shed? I mean, footings, rat wall?
Yes, it'll follow its path for, for a shed.
So it'd be 90 days.
So setbacks, setbacks, anchoring, that sort of thing would come into play.
So they may have to take it all apart in order to comply?
No, it, it should be good where it's at. So, um, I think what Samantha was talking about was, um, within the 18 months to obtain a building permit for the build, uh, and then there is provisions in there that say that within that six months, uh, from the time that it was, uh, applied for and obtained that permit, not the building process, but the permit, um, then you've got six months. If, if the project hasn't started within six months, uh, then you have 30 days to remove that shed. And that's perfect wording.
Right.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a second. We have motion and a second, everyone understands, right? So rule call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you. Alright, so now we're gonna open up new business. So new business, uh, business, why is it opposite? We have a new format. So the, the owner of... Yeah, it's the same. The owner at 7229 Flamingo, or JZBA 2023 dash 012. Representative, please come up. Come on up, state your name and address, please.
Ryan, I'm sorry. Sorry for my limp. Hi, Ryan White, um, owner of President 7229 Flamingo. Here just looking for variance for the, the rear setback of, of the house from the canal to the, to the house, it's 55 foot. My current structure is 46 foot, um, from the structure prior to me building. That was when I bought the house. I'm asking to put a privacy fence separating my, my neighbor back to the 46-foot setback, so it won't exceed past my, my house, and it's just because our, our two patios were literally eight foot from each other, we stare rate at each other, so... I was just looking so we can have some privacy between both of us.
Okay. Have a seat for one second. I'm gonna open up public comment in regards to this case. Anyone wish to speak? I mean, if it's just a question, you could ask me, but it's...
Yeah, I just wanna ask, how far from his house?
Oh, no, you gotta come up here and say, yep. Don't trip over the paintings. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name's Annette Heiza, and I live on 7353 Flamingo, and, um, I didn't... It's hard to hear in the back, and, so I didn't quite hear how far from his house in the back going towards the canal did he wanna go? How many feet back from the house with the privacy fence?
Well, it's 40, comes off of the canal, so from the canal towards the house is 46 feet.
That's what you wanna put the fence up, 46 feet?
No.
No, from the canal back, so how far from your house back?
It would be on the side yard of the house.
Yes.
It would go up. Are you asking from the, from the road or from the house?
From the house, from the back of the house towards the canal, how many feet back are you gonna go?
It won't go past in the house.
Oh, it's the back of the house?
Correct. The back of my house right now sits at 46 feet.
Okay.
So I, there was a previous variance, I have a three seasons room on the backside of my house that sits 46 foot from the canal. And I'm asking to be able to take my fence to the, to the edge where my house is currently.
Okay, so you have a fence up there now?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I thought the way I had thought it read is that you wanted to go from the house all the way to the canal with the privacy fence. Okay, 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 then I don't have anything to say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak in regards to this case? I'm gonna close public comment. Oh, we have a letter?
Here, Brian.
I got them. They came in later. You're reading them.
Are they open this case?
Yeah.
Alright, "To whom it may concern, Attention Township Zoning Administrator, Thomas and Carolyn Kohler are homeowners at 7345 Flamingo Drive. We are not in favor of a privacy fence in the rear waterfront yard at 7229 Flamingo Drive. There is an ordinance against such a fence, so why even consider letting them put a fence up? If this happens, more fences will go up, and this will really block the view of what we have now going up and down the canal. All my neighbors and other homeowners we have talked to are also against this. Being homeowners and taxpayers, I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you in return, Thomas Kohler and Carolyn Kohler."
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Who are you talking to?
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Is my mic off?
Is, is that a mic on? We're on.
Okay. I will try again. "To whom it may concern, Attention Township Zoning Administrator," is that better? "Thomas and Carolyn Kohler are homeowners at 7345 Flamingo Drive. We are not in favor of a privacy fence in the rear front yard, uh, rear yard at 7229 Flamingo Road Drive. There is an ordinance against such a fence, so why even consider letting them put a fence up? If this happens, more fences will go up. This will really block the view that we now have up and down the canal. All of my neighbors and other homeowners we have talked to are also against this. Being homeowners and taxpayers, I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you in return, Thomas Kohler and Carolyn Kohler." Uh, this one is addressed to zoning administrator. "In regard to the above property, which is 7229 Flamingo Road, this is in regard to the above property requesting a privacy fence in the rear waterfront yard. We do not support this variance for privacy fence against ordinance number 126, section 3.29, Daniel and Mary Small at 7247 Flamingo Street."
So...
I think everyone thinks that I'm...
Come on back up, yeah, I've got some questions.
So I know, when the letter comes out, right, it's not clear that I'm not looking to go all the way to the canal.
You're only looking to go to the backside of the...
Correct. Right now, I can technically put a privacy fence 55 foot from the setback. I'm, I'm asking to go that additional nine feet that would be in line with my building, so I'm not exceeding anyone else's view. The only one that it would be, would be my neighbors, direct neighbors, right?
Are they here?
They are not here, which I've obviously talked to them prior to submitting the $250, you know, variance. I'm like, I'm not gonna do it if they're gonna be objective to it. So I can understand.
So how far, how, how far is that, uh, sun porch, roughly?
The sun porch is 46, like it is on the mortgage survey, 46 and a half feet.
No, from the house out, but it's not here on that 14?
14 foot. And that's to the, to the eve.
Right.
Building, the building is...
So technically, you're going 14 foot past the house.
Correct. Well, past the house, which is in line with the sunroom, right? 'Cause no one can see around the sunroom.
Correct.
That's the same.
You said the sunroom's nine feet?
14.
14 foot.
14 by 35.
14 by 35.
Do you know when the variance was granted for the sunroom?
I think it was in 2001 or '03, so it's early 2000s that it was done.
Okay. Can I speak to Gary about this one?
Yeah.
So Gary, the variance is what, eight feet?
So what, what we've got here, just to give it to you, is that they're just looking to go up to the back corner of their sunroom. So it doesn't go out any farther out into the yard than the existing sunroom is. So there's no further site obstruction. Yes, in 2001, they did go before the ZBA, uh, for that sunroom, uh, and had that approved in 2001. So they're just looking to bring that up, I believe, just to... So they're just looking to bring that up, I believe, just to give them some privacy when they're inside of the sunroom. Because there's no other benefit, because it's not extending beyond that.
Want to see it?
Yeah, I see it now. I didn't know what that bay was.
And it's not in regards to the privacy fence or any kind of fence? I mean, that's not anything to do with us, right?
Correct. It could be six foot.
Material wise or anything.
The fence could be six foot? Six foot privacy. That's what's...
But it's up to the building department to approve materials and all of that.
Correct.
Right, okay.
The sunroom's fully enclosed?
The sunroom is enclosed.
So it's not like just an open porch. It is a full sunroom.
Correct.
So it's, would be obscuring the view regardless whether the fence was there or not, in other words.
Yeah, the building has been...
Actually, it's only going to, it's only doing the patio, right? Or is it, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's a yellow line.
Yeah, 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 the concrete, yeah, I'm sorry. I keep thinking that this is the sun porch, and it's not.
No.
This is the sunroom. This is just the concrete pad.
I was doing patio at the same time, so I'll just show you.
Yep, yep. That's what threw me off is I thought the sun porch was in the back of the yard. It's not. It's attached to the house, is what I'm...
Yes.
On this drawing, why does it say proposed covered porch? If it's already there. Is it just on the drawing?
That's the document.
It's from 2001.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is mortgage survey. It was grabbed.
Okay, I didn't... 87, yeah, okay.
Here we go, fences again, guys. This one isn't as, isn't as bad. Thank you, Gary, isn't as bad. So none of this, Gary, is relevant, right, to us?
Correct.
His stuff?
But that's what you want to do, so that's an acceptable fence.
Okay. Well, last time, you know what I mean? Last time, we had to approve a fence, what it looked like. Okay, we're good. So we're not doing any of that, good.
This is one of those ones where I don't see a problem with it, but I'm having a hard time finding a practical difficulty.
Well, let's read what he wrote.
Yeah, nervous a lot.
How wide's your lot?
Eighty foot.
He's right on the neighbor's lot. They're right connected. No, I think it's unique, it's narrow.
I don't think it's blocking anyone's view. You know what I mean? I don't see that being any kind of issue. Not that I care what the neighbors can see right now, but...
Yeah, but is privacy a practical difficulty?
Kind of if you run around naked.
That's a personal choice, not a practical difficulty.
Just saying. Doesn't want to get in trouble. I don't, I...
I don't know.
You can stretch practical difficulty any which way you want. You know, as what he wrote, this is a narrow lot. I mean, he's, you know, eight feet away from...
I mean, that's not really narrow for a...
10 and 5 is typical. He's got 17 on the other to the residence.
Right.
He's got a little bit more distance.
Ryan, do your neighbors mind?
No, ma'am.
They're fine, okay. I mean, we could base it on the fact that the variance was given in 2001 to extend it already and it won't change any... There, you know, any vision.
How far back is your neighbor's house?
The one that's a, right next to me.
What's our straight line right there? What's our straight line on that?
They're setback further than I am. I don't know the exact footage. But the next neighbor's got a shed that's in line with my sun porch. Like, our line of sights are the same. I think that's probably how that variance happened for the sun porch.
That's right. So I'm getting that, I guess.
I don't think it's going to change anything, slight line. Especially anybody further down the canal.
Chris?
Well, I don't have a problem with it because it was, because it was a sunroom that's back there anyways. He's not going back beyond the building, existing building line. So it doesn't, the ordinance was there to prevent obscuring the view of the water and put the addition there. I don't think this fence is going to do any, make it any worse.
So could the practical difficulty be that a variance was issued in 2001, which would prevent him from putting a fence there if the building wasn't there? Is that a stretch?
I don't know if he'd put a fence there if the building wasn't there that far back. Do you know what I mean?
I know. I'm just trying to fill up with something.
Right. Carol? Carla, you know, you like fences?
I mean, privacy is an issue, I would say. I mean, it's someone's perception, whether that's a practical difficulty or not. He didn't put the sun porch there, he bought the home. You know, so I wouldn't want someone peering in my windows.
Again, a stretch, but I think in this case we might be able to use something like that.
It's going to be six feet tall, Ryan. Six feet tall?
Six foot.
You wouldn't what?
I wouldn't go back to the first variance. Or reference the first variance.
Well, that's not what I was here.
The way things are going now, it typically wouldn't be enclosed now.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. It's an unusual circumstance because a variance was granted back then that would not be allowed now. He did not do it himself. So now he is trying to correct it. I mean, I can do every other criteria. I just am not sure what to do about the practical difficulty. You know, that's where I always...
I obviously can't vote, but a narrow lot prevents the owner from having a private home.
I can't even vote? What do you mean?
She's announcing that now.
But you can still speak.
Okay. Maybe perhaps the narrow lot prevents the owner from having a private home, which is a permitted use of his property.
What's that average lots over there?
I think it's all, majority of 80.
Gary, 80, 85? Right. I'm not trying to be like that, you know what I mean? To me, I get it, but if it was a 50-foot lot, I could see, but Flamingo was developed. We have to keep that integrity on that, too.
Up back if there's a shed there that is open.
And this?
Well, that's the neighbor's house, not yours.
Yeah, I don't see...
We're only looking at this property, really.
Yeah, I don't see the straight line. Where do we do the straight line effect anymore? I don't see that with the site. The neighbor does have a shed. He has a sunroom. So connecting it just to the sunroom isn't going to... The neighbor's not going to lose any more visibility.
I'm saying...
Correct?
Sir, yeah.
Is this the property?
I have the sight line, if you want to see it.
This thing?
Where does the door enter onto the patio?
Yeah, that's it.
Off the rear of the sunroom?
But the blue is... That doesn't mean...
So it faces the neighbor off of the sunroom.
Or this is the fence.
So that's the only way out to the patio. So all your, all your motion to go into the backyard, you'd be staring right at the neighbors every time.
That's correct.
That seems like a practical difficulty because of the design of the sunroom. To me, seems like a practical difficulty.
It has to be with the physical piece of property, not, well...
It's attached.
Yeah, that's attached.
Gary, can I ask you a question on the rear setback? Is it, like, if that sun porch wasn't there, how far back could he put this fence? He's 60, his house is 60 feet off the seawall.
Right. Minimum required setback in R2 is 55 feet.
55.
So he could, he could extend along the side of his house up to 55 foot from the seawall.
So typically, he's, he's really asking just for a nine-foot variance? Is that eight-foot, nine-foot variance of... I guess that's what we're looking at the most? Because, I mean, regardless, he's going to go to 55 feet without us.
Correct.
Correct? League, I mean, without coming in front of us, he can go back to 55. He's just asking for the additional nine feet to come up to the backside of his sun porch.
That was...
Am I speaking for you?
That was previously, previously approved in 2001 by the ZBA at the time.
So, I mean, that makes a little easier. Because no matter what, tomorrow, he can go to 55 feet.
Correct.
Depending on what the other properties are on either side, right?
I'm sorry?
Depending on the other properties on the other side, it'd be, could go back. Depending on how the houses are sitting.
No, it's going to be 55 feet from the seawall. That's the way the ordinance reads, high water mark or the seawall. And that required rear yard setback is 55. And, yeah, right now, he's at 60. But, and that's kind of unusual, because normally, they're building right up to the front and rear setbacks. So they gave a little five-foot wiggle room, but, but, yeah, no, that, it doesn't matter where other houses are. This is not, don't confuse this with straight line setback.
Right.
This has to do with 3.29, which is unobstructed yard space. That's where this is coming into play.
Okay, right. But I'm just saying if he was trying to put an addition on the back of it, it would be a different point of view on it.
Well, he's already got that sun porch and it was already approved.
Right.
You know, and he got a variance for 10 feet back in the day.
The practical difficulty, I guess, could be that the sun porch was already in existence. Yeah. It's already has a variance, so that gets into unique situations operating.
Why don't you want to use that for...
Is this the survey of the lot? Because look how weird the house is placed on the lot.
But then, then I just don't want it to be to where, hey, we allowed this porch to go back, so automatically, we get to go back. It's a certain thing. You know what I'm saying? He had a 10-foot variance on the sun porch, you know? And typically, the way we have been going, you know, we're steering away from the enclosure part of it.
The enclosure, right, yeah, the straight line.
So he, I'm not saying that we'll ever not allow, but what I'm getting at is typically, we like to see the openness of not a sun porch. You know, back in the day, who knows what I did?
I don't know, I think I was here, but I don't know this one.
Tony, I'm sure gave you grief on it.
Rest in peace, buddy. He was a stickler. He was a good guy.
So I don't have the definition of practical difficulty in front of me, you know what I mean? So you have the final one. He said narrow lot, and I don't mean to prove him wrong, but he's got an average size lot. Thank you, Gary. And that's typical of what people try to say, you know what I mean, when it, when it is. If it was a 100-foot lot, it'd be, you know, I guess, no different, but...
It's the same thing that's written...
It's the same thing that's written out. You don't have it.
Add to the personal situations of the other...
There you go.
So I don't think we can get past the practical difficulty. Do you want to read that?
Everybody hears that it's the same as this, that they filled out.
Well, I know.
And you don't have to, you don't have to come up with one form, you know what I mean? That's, I'm not saying anything for or against it, it's just...
I mean, to me, this is a situation where it is personal situations, yeah, but, yeah. I guess I think we could do the rest of them, but I think we have to stop it.
I have to meet all of them. Can you put arborvitae's? Is that considered a fence? Or is arborvitae's still a tree?
And we're into the unobstructed yard space. So typically, those are not allowed within the required...
Beyond that, I would say, I guess, beyond that. So he can do anything he wants up to 55 feet. So beyond 55 feet, he can't put arborvitae's?
There, there actually was an interpretation that came down from this board. And where they talked about greens, trees and shrubs, the areas that they couldn't be located is in that unobstructed yard space, which is the minimum setback for that zoning. So if you want to have something out there, then they have to be elevated up off the ground, even trees are supposed to be elevated at eight foot. Same thing with any kind of plantings. It would be elevated so that you don't have that obstruction. You get greater than the 55 feet away from the seawall, greater than the minimum setback, in this case, it's 55 feet, then you could have arborvitae's.
Got you. Okay.
I would make a motion to deny this variance based on the lack of practical difficulty.
So, Carla, there has to be a second? And just in support for this motion? If all of us, if there's no second, it goes away, right? And if, if there is a second, we vote. And if people vote it down, we keep deliberating until we come up with a different one. Just to give you the heads up. So if you're not for it or against it, this is, this is how important a second is and how our votes go. We got enough people now. So do we have a second for...
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So we have a motion and a second, so roll call, please.
Yes, for denying it.
Who?
No, I, I, I can't deny it, because honestly, I, I feel like he does have a practical difficulty.
Maggie?
No.
Rosie?
Yes.
No. So that one didn't go. So what's your practical, excuse me, what's your practical difficulty, Carla?
Well, I feel like because of the narrowness, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at your laptop, because I can't open it up on my, like, thing. Exceptional narrowness, shelliness, shape or area, presence of floodplains is obviously not, but, I mean, all of these right here are not his fault.
But how does it make it different than every other property on the street?
What about the door opening onto the neighbors, facing the neighbors?
But just as he said, I mean, even the door opens facing his neighbors, and it's narrow there. So coming in and out, you know, I mean, let's face it, we live on the water, so bathing suits, you know, towels, whatever, maybe somebody is, you know, doing something they're not supposed to be, whatever it is, but, I mean, it's, his door's facing his neighbor. So it's very narrow there, they have a shed, I, I mean.
But how would a fence stop the door if it opens?
It's not stopping the door, it's giving them privacy as their door's opening and closing. So if the neighbor's at the shed, and I, I mean, Ryan, I don't know if you have kids, wife, whatever it is, it makes no difference, but if people are coming in and out in their suits, and they're just uncomfortable, and people are at the shed, that fence would at least give them some form of privacy in and out of their own home.
And potentially noise too, reduce noise too.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Do you have these sheets follow?
I, I have them, yep. So I would make a motion to approve based off of the door facing the neighbors, the narrowness of the property, and him not having any privacy in and out of his own space.
That's the practical difficulty.
You have to go through the other four.
Okay, it's a unique situation, he has a sun porch that he did not, you know, was existing, there's no privacy, again, available, I mean, that's his situation. He didn't self-create it, so the previous owner added the sun porch, and the substantial justice is just what I read off the practical difficulty definition.
Do you move to approve it? So
do you second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve a variance to allow the fence. Roll call, please.
Maggie?
No.
Orlando?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rosie?
No.
Fino, Trappel?
Yes.
Motion granted. Got it, Joe?
Yeah.
Can I give him a minute just to write this down? Okay, ready? Good?
I had a separate Russell, so.
I didn't even close the public comment on that, did I? All right, so moving on, we're gonna go to the owner at seven-two-zero-four Flamingo, or JZBA twenty-twenty-three-dash-zero-one-three at two-zero-four-two-seven-two-zero-four Flamingo, sorry. Come up, state your name and address, please. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Margie Ferris. I live at seven-two-zero-four Flamingo.
Stay while you're here.
Oh, um, I'm asking for a variance, um, an open overhang over my existing porch, front porch. It's open, it's not enclosed, it's just to cover the porch area.
Looking for the second half of it.
So is the bottom porch already in, or it's already in existence?
Yes, it's already approved with footings.
All right, I'll just open a public.
Is that okay?
We'll have some questions for you in a second, thanks. I'm gonna open up public comment. I don't have any letters that I'm aware of on this one. Anyone wish to speak on this, for this case? I'm gonna close public comment. So it's a six-foot variance, is that where I read that? Gary, rate six-foot variance, she's coming closer to the proper line in the front of the open porch. Gary, can you come on up?
Kind of more of a statement than a question. We seem to get a lot of these where they're not enclosed, so they're really not blocking any view. Has the planning commission ever considered looking at this ordinance? So there can be a roof and a porch, but, you know, nothing to block the view.
As far as.
To me, that would make sense, because, like I said, we get a lot of these, and it's really not obstructing any view.
Okay, uh, you know, you can petition the planning commission to look into it further, I guess?
When we had that joint meeting, basically, I was gonna tell them that, hey, if we have three of the similar cases in front of us, and this would be about our third.
Right.
You know, almost our fourth now.
Yeah.
And typically, just to make them aware of it, hey, you know, covered porches, covered patios are coming into play now. You know, it's. Not enclosed.
It, it's still nice, you know, to be able to also motion that it remains open and unenclosed. You know, uh, simply, you know, we got properties that are built right up to the setbacks, uh, which are the ones that come before us. Uh, obviously, there's many that exceed, you know, that setback that you don't see, uh, because there's no issues with it. But in my world of the book of ordinances, you know, if, if we're into that encroaching that setback.
Right.
Then we need to come here, and that's, that's the relief that this board provides. You know, just because you get ordinances that come before you, that there's three or four in a row, that's what this board is assembled to do.
But that's, uh, up to a planner to, you know, to planning commission to, you know, look into it and change it, that ordinance, if they so choose. Right? So we're, all I'm saying is, was just put a, a little email out there saying, hey, look into the covered porches, and then.
I like the fact that we have ordinances that are straight and forward in this regard, as far as setbacks. And I'd hate to see us, you know, teeter on, on that. We've got ordinances in place for a reason. And I think the fact that they're open, um, makes it an easy maybe decision for you. But it's still, you know, it, it's something like two-tier setbacks and what you can do, and, you know, I, I always hate to see that. Uh, if we're allowing people to encroach and build into those setbacks, um, sure, you know, a, a small architectural design on, on the front of a house, you know, I, I think it's gonna add great looks to this house, there's no doubt about it. Uh, but to say that we excuse our ordinances, because at what point do you stop? You know, do you say, okay, well, it's unenclosed, so I can build it right out to the road? I mean, if we don't have that number that says, this is a setback, this is what you gotta build within, this is your envelope of building. That you should stay within that. And so, you know, if you just say, you know, if it's open and unclo- unenclosed, where will that number end? You know, then it becomes, you know, where do we come up? Then, then we're gonna be before, because we've got people that are, are coming in, neighbors are going, what are they building? You know, that's a way out to the waterway or, or out to the road. So personally, I, I like the ordinance, I like the fact that we have setbacks. It keeps us grounded, it keeps us to what we can and cannot approve, um, without any, uh, interpretation. And if we take that away, just because it's open and closed, what number is that then? How do we, how do we govern that? How do we say, you, you can't have that porch that extends out to the road?
But the porch itself is not encroaching?
The, a stoop, a porch low, um, you know, that's fine, you, you've gotta have access out of your house. And these are low to the ground, and, and actually, I don't believe that this, uh, overhang over the porch is gonna exceed, uh, where the porch is. But it is, you know, porches aren't included, um, e- means of egress are not included in that setback.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask Gary a question?
Sure. There seems to be a, you know, from the edge of the road to the property line, quite a large distance. I'm assuming that's for the utility easement, and that's why the builder set it back, scaling it all, I don't have an actual measurement, scaling it with the aerials, about thirty feet.
Correct.
And that's similar to the one that we looked at on, uh, M29, where the houses were probably just brought up forward because of this dead space that was in there.
Correct.
And that's what's causing the issue with the setbacks at this point, was the unique circumstance of that easement on that side pushing the house property back.
It's when these properties were developed, and, and I'm just going by what little I know, I guess, is that the, uh, these are all county roads. County set up easements on their properties, so the actual platted properties don't extend up all the way out to the road. That's where, when you look at it and go, it's fifteen-foot front yard setback, but their property doesn't go all the way to the road, it's usually out by the utility lines, but in essence, it is a, uh, street right-of-way. And that's where, when you say, you know, it's fifteen foot, and they want six of that feet, and, and, yeah, like the one on, on the dyke, it doesn't mean that they're building right out at the road, but.
Newer, newer construction would typically have brought the property further forward to the road, and they would have put an easement through the front. You know, right through the property, and then your setbacks would have been.
Say, these roads, dyke, those, those roads over there is the only place that I'm experiencing this, uh, where they've got these road easements that are excessive. You know, maybe they designed them to someday put in sidewalks, I, I don't know.
And then the required setback, that's R2 for that front yard.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Correct.
So we're about eighteen feet ballpark to the front of the house.
Still away from the roadway.
Well, from the, from the property line, so but from the roadway, you're thirty plus eighteen, about forty-eight from the edge of the roadway.
Well, the house is up to the fifteen foot.
So you're.
So the porch is extending out, or the, the overhang on the porch is extending out six feet farther than the fifteen, so the fifteen is where the house is, this is extending beyond that, uh, that's where we get to six-foot variance.
So six foot from the property line, but actually, that does give you about quite a good distance from the road.
Mm-hmm.
And the appearance on the street too, given both sides, because the other side doesn't have that easement, to my understanding.
No, they do.
They, they, are they that wide on the other side too?
I believe so.
I didn't see.
I mean, her house is sitting back, right, about forty-two feet.
It's not from the center of the road out, if you would look at the, uh, the, um, uh, county road, uh, maps, mapping, uh, yeah, they show everything to center of road, uh, and it's different, and it, and we've gotta look at it constantly, anytime anything comes up, to where is the platted line? And, um, this particular one is, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit distance off the roadway.
I'm used to cities.
Yeah, you know, it's different, it, within our own city, uh, township, it's different from one subdivision to another.
You may get practical difficulty. Well, I mean, I would say that because of the variance, or not the variance, excuse me, the, uh, easement that they have, I mean, that's taken up some of their space, so if the easement wasn't there, would they be able to do it?
Yes.
But.
It's actually the platte sits so far back, the line actually sits so far back from the road.
That's typical everywhere, almost.
Well, not everywhere, but.
Well, utility easements.
Well, but newer subs would have it platted up to the road quite commonly, and then they would have the easement through, and you'd start your distance from the road back. Where this is, the platte is sitting so far back, thirty feet from the road, that's quite a distance on a residential street to be sitting back.
Well, aesthetically, it would match the newer homes that are there. So it's not like it's going to really change the neighborhood.
In keeping with the spirit of the ordinance.
I mean, a house sits back forty-two feet. I mean, without that easement, you know, it would, would be able to go up closer. But it's plotted with that, but, but you can use an easement as a hardship too. As a practical difficulty. I mean, it's not.
What makes it unique?
I can't say unique, because it's not the only one that's done like that, though.
Right. I mean, I guess the practical difficulty and the unique situation would be almost the same thing.
Correct.
Does that easement affect other properties in the same district?
Affect others?
It's taken separately. But this would be self-created.
You can go back to, she didn't, she didn't plot it with the easement in there.
Right, but she doesn't have to have a roof over her porch.
Right, but that's just like saying, no one has to go over a thousand square foot of a house. There's no, the bare minimum is a thousand, so anyone over a thousand, you don't need it, like, we can't say that either. So everyone has the right to make their house updated, and, you know, however they want it to look, and I think, I think it's a good asset. You know, it's better, sometimes tearing the house down, and that might not work either, especially with today's values of property and houses, and you're gonna have to.
Wouldn't the unique be, it's on the property line?
Say that again?
Wouldn't the unique situation be, it was built on the property line, like she's stating?
Oh, but that's not where the porch is.
Right, that's, the house is.
Yeah, but the house is, which is what the house, no?
Uh, it's just at that time, as close as they could go, you know, to the, to the setback, which was. At that time, as close as they could go, you know, to the setback, which was... Right. And I'm with Gary as far as saying, hey, there's no, we can't just say, hey, we're allowed to build whatever you want. But in the same token, I don't see where a front porch covered, not enclosed, covered, is going to hurt anyone's view or hurt this house in particular, or rent this house, any special specialty that another house couldn't possibly have.
I think it would be a nice add to the neighborhood.
But that's what makes our job difficult, right?
Correct.
I mean, there's so many beautiful things that would be wonderful, but we have to follow those criteria.
But in the same token, if now we do the flip side, and we put it on the water side, then we start looking at site, and then we start looking at certain things. And if it was enclosed, there's, you know what I mean? We would look at it a little different than two posts that are sticking out of the ground. Again, the cement porch doesn't count.
Right.
Because it's not tall, or it's not... What is that quote on that? 30 inches? What is that?
Minimum?
Eight? Like, what would you consider the height being?
At grade?
Well, grade is eight inches, right?
No, I mean, you can have a step-up porch. It all depends on the height of the house, as far as how far you got to step down to get to grade. But, you know, generally, we're not in any kind of obstruction of any sort until we get to that 36-inch.
Okay. I would suspect the goal of the ordinance is to provide a nice green belt in the front of houses, which have, they have an extra 30 feet here. Also to provide safety, keeping the house back from the road, which with this extra 30 feet, you're certainly in compliance, you're certainly doing that. Although it's maybe common to the street that it's on, it's not really common throughout to have the platte lined 30 feet back from the edge of the road, although it does happen, but it's not typical throughout this, through Clay Township or in a lot of communities. So, you know, it's, it certainly meets the goal of the ordinance, I would suspect, unless you have something contrary to that. In fact, it actually exceeds what the expectations are, given that you have such a large green belt and setback on the front of the house now.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yep.
Did you build this house?
No.
Okay.
Carla?
Say, I'll make a motion.
Come on.
If you want.
All right, hang on. Got one coming.
Okay. I would say the practical difficulty is that if it weren't for the road easement, they would be allowed to have this overhang, because they would be within the distance that they could put the overhang over their porch. And I would say the unique situation is the same. It's not self-created, because the applicant didn't build the house. It was pre-existing. Substantial justice, it allows for what other residents in the same area have, and it's not contrary to the ordinance, because, again, if it wasn't for the easement, it would be allowed.
I'll second that.
Pardon?
You did not say the...
Oh, to grant the variance, sorry.
So we have a motion to grant the variance and a second. A roll call, please.
Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Landmark?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Volby?
Yes.
Yes. Granted. Okay. Give him a few minutes to write that down.
So quiet in here.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Right?
Yeah.
Anyone go to the, put that music in the park?
Did not. Is that today's night?
Tomorrow. It's Thursday.
I thought it was Thursday.
Thursday here, Friday on the island, depending on the week.
Yes, tomorrow night. Well, he's finished up your paperwork, so they can, can he go?
He gets to go. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Just see the building official.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, because you're still going to need a permit and all that stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, as that's going, we're going to go to the next new business at 8784 South Channel, or jzba2023-014 at 8784 South Channel.
I'm representing 8784. He couldn't be here, they're from Ohio. Again, to porches, though, it's a covered porch issue. And he wants to, existing home that he bought that had a porch on it that got torn off, and now he wants to put that porch back with other porch with covered roof around it. Hi, I'm Michael Badalamenti, on behalf of Jeff Candace at 8784 South Channel Drive.
All right. Okay, let me, let me just ask you. Well, open a public comment. Close public comment. So this is the, yeah, we got, they're blurry. I was just going to say, I'm hoping you have a little bit better eyes. They're really blurry. Start.
Is this the one we're referring to here?
That's one that he wants to increase the size of, and then...
And then here, you can see where the front door is to nothing.
He wants to fill out with a cover over it.
Fill out with a cover over it, yeah. All this is all, yeah, the one deck, yeah, you have those. Increasing that second story's size of that one, and then wraparound porch to match. He owns all the buildings on the property, and he's very standalone.
Is this one address or two?
It is technically two, that the little house is 8290. There are one scratch of grounds. It's on one parcel, but it's two silos.
Well, we have two variances? Yeah, I walked it, I know, I understand that. I just, which one are we doing? This one on 8784?
8784.
8784, right?
Yes.
We're not doing the other one, then, right? The other one?
No.
Okay. Just some clearer picture. Hi, Gary.
So it'd be this house, right?
So...
No, I said, you just said, no, he said, one. He owns both.
I mean, this is like a corner lot, this is like everything besides the house next to him. You mean, he's got his own little paradise over there, so how...
This, without a doubt, is a peninsula that comes out. The neighboring property is owned by the same owner at this point in time. It is split as two separate lots, so at some point in time, it could be, you know, sold to someone other than the current owner. But it is, just once again, there's no setbacks on this property. Really, none of the setbacks are met, just based on location, and the houses were probably there before, and it had, probably had more land at one point in time or another, but I don't know the history on that. But, yeah, we're looking at, same kind of thing, we're looking at open porches, and with a second floor on, I think, the big water side, I think, is where the second floor is. I think on the side is still, is that the side's still going to be just a single?
Yeah.
Single and a roof?
Yeah, the existing second story, he wants to make larger, everything else is first story only.
Well, the covered porch, the second-story covered porch is on the roadside.
That's what I was wondering.
No.
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 All right, so it's flip-flop.
Isn't that the roadside?
Yeah, like, that's what I thought.
This is the second story. It's extending that, and everything else is one story. It's one story on the roadside, one story on one part of the bay, and this is that second-story balcony.
What is this?
It's their, that's their inspiration. That's not, that's not, that's not, this will not be covered. It's not on a print desk covered.
So nothing's been built yet.
No, nothing's been built.
So this is not coming out?
Correct. No. See, this is, this is the one, that is the only second story.
Right here?
Oh, okay. Right, and this is all, this is all first story around the road.
Okay.
And that's, that's their other house inspiration.
I understand.
So the two photos on the right are the ones, that's the, that's, there's no changes in any of that, then?
No.
So those, but the one, the other one is not, nothing with that one?
A little blue house.
Yeah, nothing with there, but these two, there's no changes in your plans?
Correct.
That's as it's planned out right here? Okay. Thank you.
So in regards to the, between the two houses, what do we got between the houses that...
Well, neither of these would affect the other house.
Yeah, none of that's going to affect that, the blue house.
No.
That house's come a long way in 20-some years.
Their intention is to make it match, everything's going to match on property.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, we worked on that 20-some years ago, I think. I mean, Dagowski did the addition.
Anybody have anything else, or can I make a motion? I would make a motion to approve the variance for the upper deck and covered deck within the unobstructed yard space per zoning ordinance 126, section 3.29, based on the fact that this is a very unusual piece of property located on a peninsula. It's a very unique situation, and that there are multiple buildings on this peninsula. It was not self-created, because these were built many years ago. Substantial justice, it allows what's allowed on other properties that aren't so unique to the area, and it's not contrary to the ordinance, because it's in with the area, and it is similar to what many other people have.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to grant this variance. A roll call, please.
Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Orlando?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Volby?
Yes.
Yes. Motion granted. All right, again, take a brief rating break. Did everyone get this, the new?
Yes.
There's going to be changes again?
Yeah.
Thanks to someone?
I know. I'll flip it. I just realized the day I started is the day I'm...
Well, we're going to...
816, 816.
I hope already still has applicants. We're going to be down, what, two alternates now?
So do we need one more person?
We'll be fine.
We need another alternate.
Ask Chris Holt, and I can answer those.
I already have talked to Chris.
Yes.
All right. Well, it's not like you have to be edumacated.
Who knows?
God, which one are we on now? Just the fourth one?
Last one.
All right, so...
Yours is...
Yeah, mine's, all right, so this is the...
Run 70.
Yeah, mine is 60. So the owner at, the next one is basically the owner at 5109 SL Channel, or jzba2023-015 at 5109 South Channel.
My name is Sandy Rosen. I'm a homeowner at 5109 Green Drive, or 5109 South Channel. We're applying for a similar variance to the last two that we discussed, where the house that we had was in poor condition, we had to knock it down, and we're building a new one. We're putting on the same footprint. We wanted to have a second-floor balcony, which is basically overhanging the first-floor deck. It's completely transparent, it'll be like a stainless steel wire railing that'll be see-through, the lower level won't be obstructing anything. The house, I think I said, the house will be on the original footprint. The, we have the support of all the neighbors, it won't be affecting their view at all. The, it's difficult to move the house back, where, you know, where, the house is water on three sides. And so we have a drainage situation with the grading of the property. If we have to move the house back, it affects the way that the property's graded, and also tightens up the space that we have available for the septic field. So we're requesting the, that we can build the house at the same footprint as the previous house, and a variance to allow the balcony to overhang into the setback area.
Thank you.
They couldn't count on the last minute, but there are letters from the both adjacent sideline neighbors.
Perfect.
The notice doesn't say anything about the overhang in the sentence.
Well, I'm calling it an overhang, the building department calls it a covered porch.
It's the covered porch.
Which, really, they're stacked porches, it's not a true roof, it's a polytropical porch, so...
It's also prop...
But is it in the setback, or is it okay?
So it's a covered porch, right here.
Right.
That's within.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So the variance is on this side.
Okay.
All right, so you guys should just stay there. I don't, I'm going to open up the public comment.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion granted. All right, again, take a brief rating break. Did everyone get this, the new?
Yes.
There's going to be changes again?
Yeah.
Thanks to someone?
I just realized the day I started is the day I'm.
Well, we're gonna. I hope already still has applicants. We're going to be down, what, two alternates now?
I'll be fine.
We need another alternate. I already have talked to Chris. Well, it's not like you have to be edumacated. God, which one are we on now?
Last one.
All right, so. Yeah, mine's, all right, so this is the. Yeah, mine is 60. So the owner at, the next one is basically the owner at 510 NISL Channel or Jay ZBA 2023-015 at 5109 South Channel.
My name is Sandy Rosen. I'm the homeowner at 5109 Green Drive or 5109 South Channel. We're applying for a similar variance to, well, the last two that were discussed. Where the house that we had was in poor condition, we had to knock it down and we're building a new one. We're putting on the same footprint. We wanted to have a second floor balcony, which is basically overhanging the first floor deck. It's, it's completely transparent. It'll be like a stainless steel wire railing that'll be see-through. The lower level won't be obstructing anything. The house, I think I said, the house will be on the original footprint. The, we have the support of all the neighbors. It won't be affecting their view at all. The, it's difficult to move the house back where, you know, where the house is water on three sides. And so we have a drainage situation with the grading of the property. If we have to move the house back, it affects the way that the property is graded and also tightens up the space that we have available for for the septic field. So we're requesting the, that we can build the house at the same footprint as the previous house and a variance to allow the balcony to overhang into the, into the setback area.
Thank you.
They couldn't count on the last minute, but there are letters from the both adjacent sideline neighbors.
Perfect.
The notice doesn't say anything about the overhang in the sentence.
Well, I'm calling it an overhang, the building department calls it a covered porch.
It's the covered porch.
Which really they're stacked porches, it's not a true roof, it's a polytropical porch, so.
It's also.
But is it in the setback or is it okay?
So it's a covered porch right here.
Okay.
That's within.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So the variance is. All right, so you guys should just stay there. I don't, I'm going to open up the public comment. Anyone close public comment? Well, except I got these two letters. Sorry.
To whom it may concern.
Sandy.
Sandy.
Rosen.
Rosen, okay. Yeah, I didn't know what the middle name was.
Yep.
Have explained to me Charlene W.
Thornton.
Thornton, where they're doing and building their new home. I'm fine with what they are doing. I can't wait to see their new home. It will be beautiful. Charlene.
What's her address?
Her address is not on here, just her phone number. If you have any questions, call me.
Call her, I'll find her address. I'm kidding.
He's kidding, he's kidding.
Is it, is it the neighbor, is it?
It's the one right before our property.
Okay. It's one of the neighbors, right?
Yes.
Adjacent, same lot.
Okay, thank you.
This one?
Or it's the same one?
No.
Well, seeing they're on the peninsula together.
Variants related to new build. We have reviewed your layout and request for a variance to the front setback for your new house related to the second. Floor balcony and its potential impact on our property at 5145 Green Drive. Based on layout stakes in your explanation regarding the construction, we have no issues with your request. Please let us know if you require any additional input from us in this matter. We look forward to seeing your new home. Regards Gary and Lisa Victory.
Thank you. Okay, you guys sit down for one second and I'll. Gary, on the straight line, I mean, can you help us with this?
Do you guys have this sheet here?
Yeah. So, so that dotted line that goes through? That's, that's going to be your straight line?
From house to house.
From house to house, so.
Even though there's a canal break in it, that doesn't, that still counts?
It's the next, it's the adjoining property, so.
Okay.
I don't think that that excuses that. Because quite honestly, this benefits, the straight line benefits this situation. Because if we're in an R1, then setback's 40 feet, right?
Right.
So the fact that, you know, yeah, they're in at 28 feet.
Right.
This straight line benefits them here. So that the main house is slightly encroaching, looks like a little over a foot, that it actually encroaches past that straight line.
So is it the covered porch or is it the principal building? I know it's both the same, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, you know, once we have the roof, it's all, in my world, it's all one.
So basically, it's 11, 11.4 according to this, was it? That was, I thought I said 11.3.
11.3.
11.3, so 11.3. Man, this is so unique.
I was going to say, I think.
This is just crazy that we have. I love the straight line and I hate the straight line, you know that, and it does work for this one, for sure.
It absolutely works for this one.
For sure it works. Or you'd be building a thousand square foot house according to Bonnie.
Yeah, I understand, but the other way.
But to me, it makes sense.
Other way?
I mean.
If the other way, it would, this, this number would have to be 35 or 40?
40.
40 instead of 28. So, so the benefit of a straight line, this is a residence, this is a residence. So that's the, that dotted line is our straight line.
Yeah.
They're just coming over 1.4 with the existing house and total 11.3, 11 point whatever inch with the covered porch.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So technically, we're, they're asking for the 11.3 variance because the covered porch is past that straight line.
Right.
Kind of wish you just give you power to take care of these, Gary.
Well, I think there's enough practical difficulties here. I mean, there is already an existing, you know, I mean, the house has been there. They mentioned septic, so then we would have to deal with that if we tried to move the house.
Well, there's nothing there now, right?
Well, they tore our house down and they're going on the same footprint.
Right, but same footprint.
Drainage and.
You know, but are you going to reuse the septic or have to update just?
Honestly, $25,000.
And that's a cheap one, right there. Yeah, I got you. At least you have a road you have to purge it in. I've had to purge septic in before and that's no fun on an island at all.
What's the, what's the drainage when it's all, you bring in? Is it drainage around the septic?
By putting it that way forward, you can actually lower the house a foot and then we're not going to impede the one neighbor that's on the.
Okay.
Upstream side that's on the same parcel. That was a point of keeping it up there too, because then we can lower to get into the house and that raise our grade too much.
Can I ask Gary a couple of questions?
Sure.
The existing house, everything's removed, footings, everything, so they're starting completely over? There's nothing left, correct?
That's correct.
The, the placement of the houses upstream and downstream, was that through a survey? I, I mean, on the drawing here, we're a little bit.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty accurate, though. You know, just looking at it from aerial, I think we can look at that for this purpose and, and conclude that they are correct.
But no, no formal survey locating these houses upstream and downstream?
Not that I'm aware of.
So nothing to really say. We're kind of going within a foot here and there, but we got all this distance. And so we're just basing it on an aerial view then, as to what the setback and the encroachment actually is?
To my knowledge, yeah. I mean, they may have.
But there's no, so they never did a full survey to show the properties on either side?
I'm pretty sure there's a survey on this property, but. I just don't have it, you know, in front of me.
Because I went through the package, I came in, I went through the package, I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
Besides this and this.
For this purpose, yeah, we might not see all of that documentation as we're not seeing documentation for the actual build of the new house.
I'm sorry.
Because we're basing the, just the line off the houses, so we're, how did they place these houses? Were they, is it actually just drawn as a line or?
Hang on, Chris, hang on a second, Chris. Sorry to interrupt you, Chris, but this is a survey by a professional.
But there's no dimensions on the house here, there's no address.
This is just a small.
Well, there may be, but there's no.
But what I'm saying, this is a.
Copy that, the office needs to you guys, that's a two by three.
Right, versus a legal, legal paper, but we have to, you know, done by a legitimate survey company, they're going to run that straight line with or without numbers on it. You know what I mean? And this is a local survey.
Yeah, BMJ.
Yeah, so, I mean, he knows the consequences of it. Is what I'm saying, it's not, it's not a builder just on a napkin, you know?
Well, it didn't say on a napkin, but I just don't see an address here for the one downstream.
And it might have it on a full survey.
I didn't see any measurements, so. I didn't see it on the full package that was in the office either, so I was just curious as to, because we're kind of going pretty, pretty close here as to the setbacks. We're right on, we're basing the variance right on this line and do we know for sure that's the line?
Again, I'm going to tell you that we're going to, we have to trust the professional on that because that's how the township would normally. He's not going to fabricate the straight line setback.
And keep in mind that we also do field inspection on that, so.
He won't stamp that.
You know, when, when we're actually in the trenching and digging of footings and that sort of thing, we're verifying this out in the field, so.
Are you worried about more than 11 feet or less than 11 feet? Is that what you're?
Well, we're coming up with a finite variance number here, but we're basing it kind of on just a, not a very detailed drawing here, was my concern.
Are you worried that that's not the official survey?
Well, I don't, it's not a complete, we don't have any dimensions really where these houses sit and even an address, but it may be just that it's shrunk down, but.
I see what you're saying, it could be give or take, you know?
Could be a few feet here and there and just the aerial views may, may not be accurate. Because you're basing it right on, on that without having a, unless you tie the variance to that straight line, reassessing that straight line in the field, which I guess would be possible. I assume it would be done, but.
Well, I guess if you approve this variance at 11.3, 11.4, whatever is written, they can't exceed that. So if it's nine foot, it's a bonus, but they can't go to 12 without coming in front of us.
If they filled it and they figured it's an extra, say it is 12, then what do they do?
They'd have to come back in front of us. That'd be up to Gary's, you know, discretion if he's going to say give or take. But typically with a survey done by, I guess, not the contractor, not saying that he couldn't have done that, but.
There's no notion, no question, it can be done in the field and verified, but we're.
Who gave us this survey?
I turned it in with the plans and the building permit.
Okay.
And the, yeah, and the application.
And you signed, who signed the applicant's signature?
I did.
Okay. Is that the appropriate survey?
Yes, yes, so we're going to survey the house that the answer to.
I mean, other than what's that came up with the numbers, you know, right? 11.4, 11.3, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Okay, so we have practical difficulty as.
Drainage and grading. But there's water on three sides.
Septic area.
Unusual shape of property.
Very unique, thank you, Gary. Very unique piece of property.
And the unique situation again is that it's on a peninsula. There are multiple houses on the property. We have to consider the septic tanks because it is on Harrison's Island. It was not self-created, the building was dilapidated and they were forced basically to take it down and want to put it right back up on the same footprint, but make it attractive to the neighborhood. I think the substantial justice is that it will be a good addition to the peninsula and those around it. And it's not contrary to the ordinance because they are building on the same footprint and they are maintaining the spirit of the ordinance. So I guess that's my motion to approve.
All right, hold on. Now, would you feel better, Chris, if she added to have like a buffer of one foot or a couple inches for Gary to have discretioncy if there is a discrepancy on it versus them coming in front of us again?
Well, this is, so I guess, I don't know if you would really.
I mean, we have to, we have to consider professionals, professionals, and they're not going to want to cheat, but.
Well, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that at all or even implying that in any way.
Well, no, I, I.
I could say up to 14.
Was this just, someone took a plot plan and drew a line through and came up with that or was there an actual calculation?
What if I say up to 14?
Well, I, I just think that the, when, when you hire an engineer company to do this, you know, they, they're coming up with the numbers. I mean, that's all they do for a living is numbers. But in the same token, if it's two inches off, I don't, you know, I don't want to see them coming back in front of us to ask for an additional two inches. Not saying that Gary doesn't have the leeway or nor are we ever going to see the two inches. But in the same token, if you feel better saying, hey, you know, you got a little flub room here, just, just in case something happens or you hit existing footings and it's weak and you have to move, you have the opportunity right now to give them a little bit. In this case.
Should I amend my motion to up to 14 feet?
I'm just asking, Chris, if he feel, would feel better, if he would do a yes vote, if he'd feel better with that versus just in general.
Yeah, 12 feet, that's fine.
Well, aren't they asking for 13?
They're asking for 11.
So, yeah, 12.
11.3 or 11.4? Let's get that, I saw, I thought I read 11.3 somewhere.
I seen 11.3 also.
So why don't we amend the motion that I just made to allow for at Gary's discretion or the building officials' discretion?
Up to?
Up to 12 feet.
That help? I mean.
I mean, I'm, I'm field verifying it anyway, so.
Correct.
I'm looking at the straight line setbacks and based on the plot plan, I know that we're dealing with porches that are going to extend, you know, the 11 feet, three inches beyond that point, so. No, that's all can be field verified.
But just say it was 11 foot and five inches. Not saying that you're not going to give it to them and I'm not going to hold you to this anything, but, yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Could say based on this provided.
No?
I think that's fine, I mean.
The only reason I say is because it was brought up and I want Chris to be happy with, with any motion that's out there, but in the same token, you know, to give you a smidgen of a leeway, you know, hopefully it's less.
I had, no, I don't really didn't know how this line was generated. Now, if you're telling me this was generated from an engineering company that did the plot plan and came up with this line, well, I'm comfortable with that. Was this something that the builder took an existing plot plan and said, well, this is what we're trying to get it to work into? I don't know, I don't know where that came from. If you're saying it's from the engineering company that developed, generated that line, well, it's a whole different ballgame and I certainly do trust the number.
Yeah, because we, Gary, because we only do, we don't have BMJs, you know?
But, but here's, here's where it is, Chris, is that I'm basing everything off of that straight line, okay? So that's our starting point, is that straight line.
Exactly.
So in field verification, I'm going to be drawing that straight line. And knowing that, that this building isn't going to increase in size or decrease in size. The actual location, I'm not looking at so much, you know, where it is located, but I'm going to be looking at that straight line and then we'll work with the 11 feet, three inches off of that line to say this is your encroachment. So, you know, the, the key number here is that straight line, that's what everything is based on. And whether or not they're accurate or not where the other houses are, that's where the accuracy out in the field will come into play.
But this line was generated from the serving or the engineering company that came up with that straight line.
But, but the number is, you know, and that might be fine for the actual setback off the property. But that setback is going to be generally set at that straight line. So whatever that happens to be to the C-wall is probably small in comparison to making sure that these buildings are lined up within a foot, foot point four, and then knowing that our, our porches are going to extend beyond that. So that number from the C-wall to the edge of this porch probably isn't as important as when I feel verify that, that our footings are lining up from one house to this house to the other house.
Okay, very good. All right, so you don't, I'm comfortable with it, that was, my question was just how it was determined.
Okay. So you don't have to amend it if you don't want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry for so long.
Did we get a second? A second, okay.
So we have a motion to approve as stated, right?
Yeah.
As written up? No, no, we're not, we're not giving any additional.
To approve the variance for waterfront front line setback per ordinance 126, section 3.11.
Okay, and a second, so roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion granted. Okay. Now I lost my. Thank you.
I wait, signing commission.
Yeah, hang on. I lost my. There it is. There it is. Give you a minute.
It's tough, Joe, isn't it? It's tough right now.
He loves it, loves it. Gets that pay increase, he's just loving it.
That whole ten dollars.
He's loving it.
Yeah, I was thinking the other day, how long have we been doing this?
I don't, I don't remember that for the central You good, you good for a little bit?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, report from planning commission?
There was only one item, and that was for a property at, on High Street. And that was for a business to be located on the property. It was for a brewery, coming up with his own line of a craft beer, very small production, goal is to move it to commercial. He really did a heck of a presentation. I'll leave it, let you guys look at this, how he did this.
Yeah.
So, yeah?
Yes, it's really good.
Yeah, he really did a nice job. And he really took, really knocked himself out with that, so very clear
Jerry
It was, it was well-funded, well-thought-out, and it passed, and wish him the best. And that was really about it, that was
Perfect.
Real simple. Except he didn't bring any samples, that was
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, actually, he's got a couple restaurants now, you know, during our presentation that are, once he got established and everything was up and running and it was all legal, not that he's illegal now, whatever he does, but
Tastes better
Just saying, when he can sell it to the restaurant, I think, I think a lot of the local restaurants will have it.
Yeah.
You know, I know Capri was interested, you know, and
They all have Spend three hundred thousand for
I mean, it's like the wine shop in
Yeah, sure, that makes all, makes perfect sense, and he's
He did have a good presentation, I wish him the best. All right, so nothing else?
That was it from planning.
Perfect. Anything else? Anyone have any news or saying goodbyes or anything?
This is my last meeting.
Thank you very much for all your
Thank you for your exact year of service.
Yes.
Two years, two years, I'm sorry.
Wish, wish you the best, and where are you gonna, are you moving?
Yeah, I'm gonna be with my husband finally in Virginia.
Very nice.
He's in the Navy, he finally just came back from deployment, so I will.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
But you haven't
Thank you. I miss you guys.
All right?
Motion to adjourn?
Nope, public comments, Gary? All good? We did a perfect meeting again?
You're gonna love these long days.
Now you're up, close public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll let you second up your last meeting.
Welcome, Carla.